This conference will now be recorded.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Mitchell County Board Supervisors Budget Meeting today. First up, it is January 8th, 2025. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda for today.
Dan made a motion. Is there a second?
Okay.
A second in. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. First up on our agenda is conservation. Welcome.
Dave, how we doing today?
We're doing great.
Well, how are you guys doing this one? Hit the highlights. Which department you want to start with? I got three.
You start wherever you want to start.
I start. We'll start with the very easy one. Let's start with the REAP one. That would be account 17, budget 17.
Alright.
That one is, we put $9,000 as revenue, $9,000 as expenditures. That is the REAP account, so that is funding that we get from the state of Iowa. We had a budget amendment last year, or the current fiscal year that we're in, which was up to $30,500. That was for the land acquisition. And then, this is where we're going for the... These are for special projects, what the state gives us money for. So it's just revenue in, revenue out. So that's a pretty easy one, set up on that one type thing. So, if you use special projects as land acquisition or trail development types, and what the money's got to use for. So, we budget $9,000 in, $9,000 out. I'll move to recycling center, which would be number 38, would be your next one on. If you see your blue sheet, I gave you a cover sheet on the very top of the packet I handed out to you. Not going to go through line item by line item, but for the most part, you can see our tax asking for recycling centers is going to go down by $107. So, basically, the big changes that we're doing in that line item, we had some equipment that we were working on, and now we took that money back out of this fiscal, or the next fiscal year. We did have an increase, though, of course, with the FICA ipers and wages, with the 3.3% increases, so that kind of offsets. So, like I said, our tax asking for the recycling centers going down $107 from the year before. Are there any questions?
Yeah, so the telephone, oddly enough, on that one jumped quite a bit.
Yeah, it's because it's been budgeted at that amount for a number of years, and then, basically, we had internet put back in in 2020, so this is the worst realistic number.
Okay, so you're back up to that budget.
Yep.
Is that $750 or $950?
It's $950, yep. There is a loop in there. You just have to look.
We got a little white space.
Any specific questions on recycling center? Okay, moving on to conservation. We'll hit the big things. Start with the cover sheet again. You can see last year's asking. We are up $69,495 for our tax asking, but our overall numbers, of course, are down. The general fund will be going down $436,000 in money, and then also revenue will be going down $500,000. A lot of that is because of the projects and then the land acquisition. Those were in this fiscal year. We're not doing them again next fiscal year, so that's where they kind of drop type thing. The big line item changes that you'll see, of course, is the land tax and environmental restoration. That's going down $219,000. Again, we don't have schedule to buy a piece of property at this point in time, so there's no funding, no revenue coming in for that, but there's also no expenditures going out for that. The staff salary increases are in there at 3.3 along with the step plan stuff that we had set up. The other big changes that you'll see is the FEMA numbers are gone. We're hoping that we don't have any more FEMA disasters, so that money is out for both revenue and expenditures. And then, our construction line item is going down by $190,000, and that is because we wrapped up some of those projects. They were just one-time projects, so they're going out, so we're taking them off the books type thing. Our equipment line item, we increased. We'd like to buy a mini excavator. That's our big thing. The big changes on this whole thing, how you come to that $69,495 for tax asking, is the salary increases, FICA ipers with those changes, and then the mini excavator that we'd like to buy. Our mini is way beyond where it needs to be. It needs to be sent down, not down the road, but it needs to be, we need a new one. It's our second most-used piece of equipment that we have, and unfortunately, it's to the point where we really can't do much more with it. We need to get a new one. It's about, I think it's eight years old now, eight, nine years old, and we use that thing probably 25 to 30 hours a week, so you can imagine how many hours that thing's racking up on it type thing. Those are the big changes on there. The rest is just kind of small stuff. The other thing that sets it off are trust, which is not part of the general funds, not tax dollars. That is up by $20,000, but that's because we're going to have a few grants that'll run through there for next fiscal year. So that's why it's up on revenue, but it's also up on expenditures as well too. Our revenue side, I'm looking on that again. Like I already discussed, the land sale's done and the FEMA work is not going to be in there, so that's how you're dropping $500,000, because those two expenses are gone. But again, our trust, which is in tax dollars, is up by $65,000, because we only got a few grants that have begun coming in and go out. So that is how we came to our tax asking of $69,000. Some line items are going up, a lot of line items are going down. Tried to play conservative with just the increases for the staff, which is 3.3, except for the one with that step plan increase that we had set in place, and go from there.
And so that mini excavator that you're looking at is at a cost of?
$78,000.
That's in the new equipment.
That's in the new...
That's under your new equipment.
That's the increase you see from the year before.
And is there any of that grant money that could be used to help subsidize that?
No grants out there for equipment.
Or, okay, overflow from?
All grants are...
Specific.
Specific to projects or things like that. In each of there's really hardly any grants available for equipment type thing. The only grants that are out there for equipment are fire equipment, so my fire departments definitely have a lot of grant opportunities. And then our burning of CRP and stuff, but we don't use a mini for burning. Supposedly we put a hose on it. But no, it's not eligible. The only equipment grant is out there.
The dam project, would that be all?
It comes out of the trust, I don't know, the Conservation Trust, but that would be all paid in this fiscal year.
Well, it would be all paid.
So that's not tax dollars. That's just conservation. Lot of sheets, lot of numbers.
Sorry, who's calling?
No.
Anyone have any more questions?
Sure, we have the projects that we've done with the urban dollars. Anything what that's going to be coming up because of some of that?
So where we, you're talking the urban renewal?
Yeah, that's what we did.
Yep, so we're, we already did the roof project, so that's completed. We're working with the auditor's office on making sure that that gets, where it's supposed to be for when it was budgeted, when we expended it, to make sure that's done right. We'll be doing the roof or ceiling project inside the nature center here. We started, we got one less, one more bid, which the guy was just there when I left, so he's giving us electrical bid, and we'll start that project here next week and let it get finished up in Jan, or February. So we'll have this complete nature center remodel thing done by the end of February. Then, RFPs for engineering of the three parks, I think $130,000 is going to be due on February 10th. I believe it's the second Tuesday of February. That's when the RFPs are due. So, RFP is request for proposal. So we'll have at least three engineering firms supply this information on what they'll be providing us for services. Then we'll pick the firm, and then we'll begin the process of doing the landscape master plan on those three parks, Otrano, Interstate, and Helverson. Then we should have that by June of how much that should cost to do those renovations and stuff like that.
The RFP here, as far as paying the consultants then for, to do that design work, that'll come out of this fiscal year?
Yeah, it'll be in this fiscal year, yep.
And as far as the potential construction of a park, when will that happen?
That would be, we'd have to come back to you, because I know you have your urban renewal plan, but I don't know if that's been dedicated yet. The only thing we've got dedicated for sure is the nature center remodel, the engineering for the parks, and then the water trails. So we'd have to come back to you guys with, here's what it's going to cost, and that would probably be the earliest we do, would be then 2020. So we're in 2025, that'd be fall of 2026.
Okay, so would that, that's the reason I asked the question.
So budgetary would be 2027.
Okay.
Yep, so for budgetary things on that. Because they would have the designs and everything probably by June-July. Then you guys would have to, you know, say if it's in the next urban renewal plan or not, you know, type thing, look at the price on those, and decide if it's going to go or not. Then we'd have to bid the project out to get fair bidding. We want to make sure we give, you know, bid this out in July, and you got to tell them they're going to do the work in the fall. We're probably going to have high bids, because they've already got their jobs lined up for the fall, so our best bet would be to wait for the following fall. We don't want to do it during the middle of summer unless we truly have to, so waiting until fall is the best time to do it, because campgrounds are shut down slower, so we're not losing revenue closing down campgrounds.
So again, you think construction would be 2027?
Fiscal 2027, fall of 2026. And then the water trail project, it's bid out in April of this year through the DOT, and that's the other urban renewal that's been approved. And then that project, we'll still have a start date that they can start in August of this year, but we won't have the end date be until June-July of 2026, just because we want to make sure that they've got ample time to complete the projects. We don't want to put April, you got to have it, and then have it done by October 15th. You know, it only gives them three months. We want to give them enough time that our bids come in fair. Otherwise, if we constrain ourselves, you get the bid in. With March, I'm sorry, April's when bids go out. Everything would be finalized by June. Well, if everything's finalized by June, that means they got to start in August. Most contractors by June already have their projects for fall booked up. We don't want to be having higher bids, so we're thinking we'll allow them to extend the project into the following year, so they can get it done.
We're looking at next fiscal year.
That would be in next fiscal year, yep, correct. So that's our timeframe on that.
Does DNR have to, is the DNR pretty good? You can get the DNR money, that grant that you got from them?
So with what we got, and I made the adjustments for Rachel on the sheets that I turned in before. So yeah, we had it budgeted that the money would come in this year and go out this year, but unfortunately, the DOT kept bumping the project back, because we were waiting for SHPO to sign off on our Phase 1 dig at Spring Park, so we had to do an archaeological dig there, and they kept waiting and waiting before they would sign off on it. So it kept getting bumped by the DOT. So the DNR, so we won't have any money going in, or going out really on this fiscal year, so we'll just leave that money alone. We'll touch it. But we will receive $200,000 or something of that money this spring, because we'll ask for it with, on one grant, there's two grants. One grant, we can ask for the money upfront. We can ask for most of it upfront. And then when the project's finished, we can ask for the rest of it. The large grant, we have until the end of 2027 to spend the money. And that's December of 2027, so we'll have the project wrapped up way before then, so.
So you do have, you do have some funding for it, rather than just our money initially right up front?
Correct. We have over a million dollars of grant money falling in for it, but yeah, on top of what we've got for the urban renewal. And that includes money then also from the city of Osage as well, too. But the city will be paying the county, because we'll be the fiscal agent for the project, because it's two county parks and one city park that we partnered with on receiving all those grants. But they'll contribute their money to the conservation, which then goes into the funds and goes from there to pay the bills.
Right.
Sound good?
Dude, I had one point in time. I was trying to remember. Did we talk about cameras? You getting new cameras?
Yeah, we put cameras out at the dam.
I didn't know if that was down or...
We talked, we had bids and stuff for the nature center and stuff of that nature with the board. They elected not to go with those, but at this time, they decided just the Mitchell Dam was what they wanted for cameras.
Okay. Any other questions?
Alright, if you guys have changes, let us know, and then we'll make a decision on what we're changing. So appreciate all you guys' effort. It's a fun season to do this.
Oh, yeah.
Especially for Bam jumping right in, right? Day two, all the cameras are grown up, too. Alright, appreciate you guys all your effort you do. You guys have a fun rest of your day.
Thank you very much.
What's next, you say?
Yeah, who's next?
Historical Society. I thought this would go a lot.
Yeah, we were expecting you to be a little longer.
No, I was being bored. I wanted to stay conservative, so we're doing a lot.
We could have all of us come to your meeting last night.
That certainly did help.
What time are they coming?
Supposed to be 10:00.
What's scheduled times?
10:30. Yeah, so on our sheet, then we have times to kind of stick by. Well, we were supposed to start at 8:30, but we actually got it posted wrong. She puts it at 10:00.
Yeah, I liked it actually at 10:00, because otherwise you're going to stay late after the board and get all this stuff.
Yeah, so we've actually had a few of them come down already, like, it's my time. I'm like, no.
Well, you folks have a good rest of your day. We'll catch you later.
Thank you very much.
So do they usually leave it up to the department heads on whether they submit the paperwork or, you know, ahead of time to Rachel's office, or whether they bring it?
I don't know how that works inside.
So, because, you know, the Fair Board brought their own.
Yep.
The original.
Right. Laura, I think, was, did Laura? No, Laura's was already here.
Yeah, it was already.
Laura's was here. Trying to think if somebody else did.
She requested their given to her prior to all of our meetings. And some do, some don't. It just depends on when their budget meetings are for their committee boards.
Right.
So his was last night, so it was very hard to get to us, really. Historical Society doesn't follow like that form.
This form.
They just bring a sheet, just like Fair Boards.
Just like Fair.
Yeah, a different form for us.
And libraries too, right?
Libraries just bring their own. We just go off with all the information that they give us. I think that with development, they're, they're own as well. She brings different.
But those, all of those numbers are still input in the end into this system?
I believe it's the 99s, those three are in the 99s.
The three, yeah, it looked like they were.
And it depends on if it comes out of the general rule fund, or if it did like what we did last year, or out of the urban dollars.
But no, I think every department really tries to get it to renewal in the end of time. Yeah, so she can get it.
I didn't know if it was just an unusual year, or?
No, this is normal. I don't know.
Or do they all know? I mean, yeah, sometimes it's a matter of, you know, do we know that it needs to be here ahead of time, so that?
For him, he probably needed to have his last night's meeting with his board, for his board to say.
Right.
Yep, I mean, I don't know what happened at that meeting, but.
Speaking of libraries, I don't think we were here for that. I have all, all of that. You can look it over. The...
The libraries.
They just come to a regular board meeting. They...
Okay, I was going to say, did I miss a meeting and a talk and everything else?
They come in in December.
In December?
Yes, I can give you all that information.
Okay, that would be great. Yeah, because I was going to say, I, you know, in all my lists, I don't have anything on the libraries.
It's a lot to copy, so I'll just let you follow it.
Yeah, well, or if she has it, just has its own separate one like these, or no? They bring theirs. Each library, Riceville, and all three of them were here. So Jamie would have been here from Stacyville, and, okay. And I don't know who that one...
Four, yeah, four libraries.
Four, so St. Ansgar, Riceville, St. An, St. Ansgar, Riceville, Osage, oh, Steaksville, yep, yep, yep. Yeah. Yeah, four. And they were all part of the TIF funds last year that were redirected? And did that affect any of their grant writing? Or, I wouldn't think that it would, but that question was asked last year. I reflected, or asked some of the supervisors, and that was an input that I received, so.
Hello.
Good morning.
You can come on in.
Catching that cold, Mark? Yeah. I, I don't know the same one that I got, it just doesn't seem to kind of want to completely go away. Just waiting.
Must not have everybody in place, yeah. So I've not been in the upstairs of the seminary part. Do they have events and so forth up there nowadays? Are they fully renting that out? When I'd asked a while ago, they said that they weren't renting it out as much, or whatever, as they...
They hold. I mean, I've had a baby shower there, a running shower.
Yes.
School post stuff up there.
Okay.
Not sure how often, though.
Do they have their meals up there? Do you know what the meals are?
Rotary is up there on Wednesday a lot of times.
Okay.
Kind of the, if it gets rented and they have, downstairs has a cash bar, and that, there isn't one upstairs.
Okay, so it makes it a little challenging maybe.
Yeah, if they, if the people want to have drinks, then it's easier to have it being downstairs.
Okay.
I know the church was going there for a while.
Okay.
The church, you know, church and Sunday school there, so they're doing that, you know, so.
There aren't the same meals up there? Is that where that is at?
Are they upstairs?
They pay downstairs, and then they just bring the food down.
Oh, so they eat downstairs?
On the main floor, where the coffee and all of that is?
I mean, they have an elevator, but I think they just serve downstairs.
Okay.
Most of them are home, and Kate paid delivery those meals to them.
Delivery.
The meals on wheels?
Yeah.
Is that, they're made upstairs and then they deliver them out? They have volunteers that do that?
Yeah. But, I mean, like, you can go and eat there every day. Anybody can. And, but I think most of the elderly are delivered to their homes.
Right, as part of that service, the meals on wheels service? Or no?
Yeah, I don't know. It's really meals on wheels anymore after they moved from that.
From the seizure citizen center?
Hello, everybody.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning. Unfortunately, the person who had the budget proposal not here yet, but I will let them know. That you are ready. Our apologies for kind of the mix-up in terms of...
It's just one of those things happening.
Well, you know, we are on...
He would say that to us. He wouldn't say that to his wife. Such a snob.
It's not like we're punching a clock or anything.
Oh, rub it in.
Are you?
Still, for a little while. No, I'm punching two of them.
You got a girl up there tomorrow?
Yeah.
She, I don't know, she was there this morning?
Yeah.
Oh, you heard that? Okay, I can remember. She said that to you.
I went Monday after we got done. Yep, Monday. We get through it.
Aw.
Oh, do you?
You just keep it felt next.
Just throw the horse water. Use it to keep the mice away.
That's where it is.
And the mice aren't there, are they? It's working.
I'm kind of not sure.
That's what Joe says. I just put them in the shop to keep the mice away.
I'm not sure it's the science.
I said Joe doesn't have my picture on it. Well, it's the, you know, they, they're just scared.
I was waiting for him to come and mull the lawn.
Oh, yeah? He didn't? No, because he and Zayd, or he and Truman, that was their, that was their job. Good morning, guys.
Good morning.
You were all sailing the boil.
No, this was me.
So you guys doing your business fast and furious?
There was a mix-up on the time, and it ended up, mix-up ended up being 10 o'clock. So the one before you actually kind of zipped right through it, so.
He went faster than we thought he would.
I thought you were really efficient.
We are.
You just go ahead and think that. Well, go with that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm personally actually, I'm the vice president.
Well, glad you're here.
At least I can sit in the hot seat, can I? Okay.
Whenever you're ready.
Alright, well, I'm going to point out some things for you.
Okay.
If you will look on the first page, it's the balance sheet.
Yep.
If you will go down just a little ways to fixed assets, it says there's museum building and museum building donations. We currently have paid Martin $1,228,330, which is just a smidge over 55% of what the estimated bill will be. And underneath that is museum building donations, and we have, as of December 31st, received $196,400. And if you go down even further, under long-term liabilities, we have a construction loan at Home Trust, and we are currently at $410,000 that we have borrowed. We don't have to pay them any more money until February, so.
Don't have to pay Martin anymore?
Yeah, right, yeah. Yes, we're paying interest to Home Trust everyone.
What's the, since we're talking about the building, what's the projected... What's the, since we're talking about the building, what's the projected total cost then?
$2.2 million, but it might be a smidge less. It's kind of a moving target as you change things, and we've had some things that lowered it, the cost.
Just out of curiosity, but Martin is still there, aren't they?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, the anticipated completion is probably in May. You know, they had to put up pouring some of the sand outside because of, get cold. So they'll finish that in the spring.
When you say completion, you mean inside and outer shell, the whole thing?
The whole thing, yes. In fact, we were just in there yesterday, we had a meeting, and all the walls are built inside. They are, our meeting was going over with the electrician all the places that he had put the outlets and light switches and that sort of thing. And so, and they're hoping that they will have the floor heat going, the boiler going, by the end of this week. So then it will be warm in there so that they can work all winter. They've been working these cold days, but, yeah. So any other questions on that balance sheet?
So you speak about heat and brings to life, you know, electricity and solar and those kinds of things. Are there any of those types of amenities that are in this building or facility to kind of reduce those utilities costs, so to speak?
Well, sort of.
Okay.
Number one, the floor heat is anticipated to be very, very efficient. We also have forced air, but hopefully, you know, once it's up to where the temp needs to be, we'll be able to function with just the floor heat. The building also has no windows for two reasons. One is efficiency, and the other is any collections, it's, you really shouldn't let sunlight get on anything. And so those are a couple of things, and it is very well insulated and very well sealed up. And if you want to look at the next page, this was our profit and loss for October of '23 to September of '24. And we've got a spot there that's donations. Those donations do not include what we have received for the building. This is just simply donations that we quite often get.
Are they designated separately, so that these donations are not to go to the building, and then others, they're to go to like...
Well, some of them are just generic, I mean, they just, they can go anywhere, so yes, we could put them towards the building. I don't know as if we got any this year that were really designated for something else.
Okay, right.
Anyway, then if you go down just a little ways, under the income, there's miscellaneous income of $313,831. That is our selling of the Baroque woodland. And we sold our existing lights down at the CRC to the CRC. I think it might have been something else. So anyway, it looks like our net income was really outstanding this year. And it actually, we did come out, this year, we, we ended up, our true net income would have been, is higher than it has been. Usually, you know, we break even kind of thing. And, but our power show sponsorships were really high this year, and the actual $10,000 plus donations was a little higher than normal, too, so. So anyway, we did have a really good year, and obviously, it's very exciting. If you want to look at our proposed budget, under the first one, administrative, I plugged in the $15,000 that we have received for several years, every year, from the county. If you go down to Cedar Valley Memories Museum Complex, we actually haven't settled on a name, but for this, I decided to just call it that because it's everything on Cedar Valley Memories and the new museum and the smaller building. Anyway, I put down donations of $200,000. We, that is so hard to know, so hard to know. But I, I do know that there are several higher, possibly higher donation individuals who have indicated that they would want to give in this year, not last year. And when I say higher individual, I'm thinking 5,000 and above. So I don't know where we're going to be at. And for grants, I only put down $10,000, the reason being, we as a boards, some of us on the board, whatever, are capable of writing grants that are like for ShopOnState and some of these more local, smaller ones. But we did just hire a grant writer to research larger grants and to write them. And that just happened, so. Then if you look under expenses, the balance, basing it on the $2.2 million, the balance that we will have to do on the building is $971,670. Anybody have, see anything that you want a quick answer to?
All right, the CRC contribution, will that come on?
Yeah, that was another thing that was difficult about doing this budget, because we're going to be at the CRC for a half a year and out there for the half of the year, and so that will end as soon as we move.
Okay.
And we're hoping that's, at least by the end of June, if not more. We've got a lot of work to do out there. We are actually hoping that, we're planning on that our annual power show, which is the second weekend in August, that that will also be sort of the grand opening of the museum. So we're really hoping for a large crowd for that. But there's a lot of work to be done before that. Anyway, if you want to look on that last page, as I've done the budget, it shows that we're short $819,815. Anyway, we do know that you helped the Egg Society with $770,000 for their new building. And we would respectfully ask that you please consider doing the same for us, however you feel would be appropriate.
So the $819,815, that's what, that's what you're behind so far, that's considered?
Right.
You haven't wrote any new grants yet?
No. And so, there's so many unknowns.
Yes.
It's hard.
So if I can ask, has the folks over at the casino, have they been contacted? Okay, so you've already submitted grants, and they said no? That's interesting.
To Rith County Economic Development as well.
Yeah.
Rith County Development Authority.
And they generally tend to give to Rith County entities rather than outside the county. So that was a no.
Okay, so that's interesting to me, because the Stacyville Playground, a few years back, received a very large sum of money through grants. But I know we stepped through a lot of grant hoops and had an individual or two that really worked on writing grants for various entities, and, you know, like ShopOnState, which is a wonderful opportunity for people within this county. And, and they were at the meeting, at that time, they were handing donations to Leroy, Minnesota, and...
Rith County Development, that majority of their money goes to Rith County, but they do make regional grants.
Right.
Limited.
Limited.
And they tend to go to fire department.
You did get one from them.
And school.
Several years ago. Okay, okay.
And school projects, primarily here, at least that's been, I used to cover them, so I used to see that. But the other thing I was going to say is there are very few grants out there for bricks and mortar. You know, our biggest challenge right now is finding money for the construction. That, that's, you know, we can get a lot of grants for specific items within the museum, but to actually get building costs covered is difficult, I'll just say that.
And you said you just recently hired somebody to write grants?
Yes, just the other day.
Okay, so when, what is your timeline or your expectation from, from those individual, or that individual, or individuals, or company?
That individual is starting research, looking for various grants. And then we need to communicate with them more to come up with projects or that's not actual construction of the building.
Okay.
I mean, there's lots of things, you know, we've done landscaping, we've got different things that we can pull off of there, kind of, and apply for. Tourism is another thing, we're really, really wanting to tap into some tourism and become a destination, which I fully believe we can do, because we have got the very, very rare, one-of-a-kind steam engines and that sort of thing. And it's been so limited when we're not open for anybody to see that. Well, our anticipation is that we will definitely be open, as we are now, which is, what, 20 hours a week or something, for sure. And it may end up being more. The other thing we have talked about, and I didn't put in the budget at all, because it would be impossible to figure for this year, but we are thinking that we are, we'll be charging for people to visit the museum, with the exception of, say, kids or school classrooms that would come and their chaprooms, you know, we wouldn't charge them. We're hoping we can get on some bus tours. I mean, we have fabulous museum displays that's going to go out there along with the, you know, so if anybody wants to see the steam engines, we can do that.
I had one other thing with these grants, and back to that just briefly, is that with the grant writing that we hired this person to do, it will be mostly things inside, for instance, a large format printer to copy a whole page of a newspaper, a big printer. We applied for grant this year, we're turned on to that, but we're going to have to do it again. So a lot of the grant will be furnishing this new museum with the, with chairs and desks and things that we need to do. We have some of it, of course, and we'll be able to start, but as we go along, we're going to need individual items. For instance, upgrading the existing office that's out at Cedar Valley Memories will now become our research library, and that has to be constructed. You know what I mean, we have to move our bookshelves out there, and I would like to have floor covering on it besides the tile that's there, so it's a little more quiet. Those are the types of things that we think we can write grants for, as well as specific exhibit proposals that we make. But we're, we're already, we're thinking, what's going to be our first exhibit when we open in August? And while people are at our museum, so we may need some funds for that. But that's what those grants will be applying for.
So, so that grant writer is focused mostly right now on getting grants for internal opportunities or internal needs?
Yeah.
Not the facility itself?
Correct, yeah. Just because we have researched that a lot, I've had help through the Iowa Museum Organization, and those are next to impossible to get. They're either federal, you got to jump through hoops that are next to impossible, or there is no actual funding for bricks and mortars from the Iowa Museum Association. So it's, we did a lot of back and forth talking to people on those possibilities.
Any other questions?
No, this is, this is your request.
Thank you so much for coming today.
Yes, and if you would, I believe, if you would like to actually see the building, you can stop, put on a hard hat, and they'll let you in. I would actually encourage you to do that and see how, it's going to be great.
I bet it will be, yes.
And we've tried to plan for the future, because, yeah, we're just going to grow.
That's, that's the intent.
That's the intent, yeah. And, well, another thing for grants is signage, which we are planning on very soon getting together with at least Mike Minor Conservation, possibly the board, I don't know, to collaborate on signage that's on the highway and also possibly up on top of the hill. But we need some good signs so people can see it ahead of time.
I just had the Iowa Tourism lady here yesterday, and made sure they knew that you should move places.
Yeah, I don't know, if you could spruce up any of those ads or those commentary in there that, they have until, what, the end of January to do that? So you might need to take a look at that and make sure that that's in there with as much splash. Did you?
Noted.
There you go.
Good.
So that, certainly want to take advantage of that.
Thank you.
We fully really appreciate the support over all these years.
We will, we will consider, we'll do all the numbers that we're going through, so.
Thank you. Have a wonderful day. I heard that. How are you? Oh, thanks.
Good morning.
Hello. Sorry again for the interruption.
That's okay. I'm just glad I can have everything else going okay.
Where would you like to start?
Uh, where do you guys want to start? I mean, do you just want to go over the changes, or?
Or do you think there's something that's a highlight on a certain line item or whatever, be interesting for us to be educated?
Big one.
Big one.
I see it. I see it.
So in the expense sheet, under office and computer maintenance.
Seven eight or seven?
I'm sorry, that is an eight. It was initially going to be $7,000, but then I was like, oh, shoot, I forgot that I got quotes for my big project, and I need to put that in there. So we are the only office in the courthouse that doesn't have a service counter. And I brought it up in a safety meeting, that it's starting to become a problem with people walking around our desks and standing over the top of us. I'm not comfortable with it. There was one instance when Pat was still here, and somebody reached across her desk, and he was actually an aggressive customer. But yeah, it's just more frequently, and even within the past six months, I've noticed it more, where people are standing up and they've like just worked their way around to where they're basically right behind us and at our desks, standing over the top of us, looking at our computers, and that's not okay. So I have gotten, I've gotten quotes from Dave Randall to come in and do some construction to remove the little half partition walls in our office. And then I've gotten quotes for an actual counter, like a service counter with a swimming door. But I've only gotten the one quote from Dave, and then a quote from one guy for the actual countertop and the, like, the counter with the countertop itself. So I did tell them that I wouldn't be able to start until after July 1st. I plan to get a couple more quotes, just because it's, you know, a big job in my opinion. But I've had to work with Aaron as far as what legally do I need to do by code in order to get off this thing, so.
Yeah.
This is factoring in the, the amount from... Dave, and actually, no, I'm thinking I did it wrong.
So he's estimating thirty-two thousand dollars for the removal of the, the existing facility amenities and adding the new?
Actually, no, I did this wrong, I did my math wrong, I apologize. He gave me a quote that says thirty-six to thirty-eight thousand, and I forgot to add my seven into that.
We need to add that.
Yes, I apologize.
Add seven to the thirty-eight?
Yes.
Forty-five thousand then?
Yeah. But this was also just the one quote from Dave, I just needed a number to throw in my budget for you guys.
Right.
And then, of course, I didn't do my math.
Oh, you're fine.
So your ending, ending total is gonna be seven thousand more?
Yes, because in with that amount, we have the book scanner in our vault that we are using to capture all of our books. So it's part of our digitization project, and we have a, so that's got a maintenance fee on it. And I can't remember what else was on there. But that's, I think, thirty-five hundred, and I think, actually, I have the solutions amount come out of that account, what we pay solutions.
Oh, yeah.
So that's my big change this year, is just getting that service counter put in.
So will you, just trying to picture it, will you take out that metal?
Those goofy little walls that are there?
Yes, you're taking that out.
Those, so there's one right on the other side of my desk, that wall's gonna be taken out, and then that other one where the, it's got that countertop on the other side.
Okay.
That thing moves.
Okay.
So that wall's gonna be taken out, and then we'll be changing our desks around.
Yeah.
Obviously, but.
To make it work.
Yep, but it'll be a big service counter, and there will be a spot that drops down, so it's eighty-eight inch wide, so somebody in a wheelchair can come up and do paperwork, but then also, we can leave our passport photo thing there. It'll be a low enough counter that we can still do passport photos in that spot.
So when you anticipate doing this construction, where would your office go?
Um, so Monica would still be able to work at her desk where she is up closer to the door. I will be able to work out of the vault because there is a computer in there. Helen is just part-time, so I told her that we probably just have to have it scheduled where she only comes in on a day where Monica and I are gone or until it's done, I don't know how long it'll take. I'm hoping not that long. But yeah, there's a workable computer in the vault, in the vault.
Just wanna make sure you had?
Yep.
Another area you can work?
Yep.
Okay. That was really the only big thing, right? That was really the only big thing in here?
Yeah, from what I could see, that was.
I mean, our wages are going up, I mean, that's because, you know, it raises. But then for the revenue, so this, this is a boat year, so that's why for this fiscal year, last year I'd put twelve hundred. So it drops down to five hundred for next year because boats are every three years, so.
Okay.
We don't anticipate much for boats on the off seasons.
That answers my first question.
Yep, and then we are also, I'm part of the Legislative Committee for the reporters, and we are trying to get our fee modernization proposal passed. So if that passes, that will hopefully take, like, be effective July first, which means our recording costs will go lower. So I'm really hoping that passes because then that forty thousand will go a little bit higher, actually a lot bit.
That's what I was gonna say, yeah, what I'm looking at.
Um.
Percentage increase or?
So I have spreadsheets, they were confusing to me. Phil with Iowa Land Records, he did all of the math, he did all the work behind it, and it's great. I just, I don't understand the average portion of it. He said an average of like four and a half pages for a document, and I'm like, what? Four and a half pages doesn't make sense to me, but I guess math-wise, for people that understand math a lot better than I do, makes sense to them. I can't remember what the percentage was that it should increase, but instead of being five dollars for each page, it's gonna be ten dollars per page. It's not gonna be fully doubled because they're still going to be, you know, like those one-page documents where we still have to take a chunk out of that ten dollars for, I have a records management account specifically for records management, and then there's an ESS account where we will send, I think it's two dollars, and that will go to Iowa Land Records to help keep that website up.
So, so that?
Not fully double, but, but it's gonna go up by a lot.
Okay.
Hopefully it goes there, which for Spring ISAC, there is a legislative meet and greet, I think, on the twelfth, if anybody's interested in going. I think it's gonna be at the Capitol, the night of the twelfth, like five to seven, so we can meet with legislative representatives and discuss our fee proposal again. So, yeah, and I have a.
Of this, this month?
Hmm? Nope, the twelfth of March, I'm sorry, so it's, it's Spring ISAC, yeah.
Oh, I just got that email.
Yeah. And I'm trying to get a meeting set up with Doug Campbell to talk to him, too. We met with Jane Bloomingdale about that already a couple weeks ago, so she's on board, which is a great step. But as far as any other changes, I don't really anticipate anything. Just that boats are going to be different, and hopefully this forty thousand will change, I don't know. Will I have to, I don't have to amend for revenue, do I?
Yeah.
Okay, well, then if it passes, then I will be amending the budget to hopefully bump up. Yeah, so if we won't know until. Until it passes.
If, if it passes, you know, soon, then before we actually approve the budgets completely, then you could just change it, but it passes after, you'll have to amend it the first.
Perfect.
Sounds good.
There's usually an amendment right up in the first fiscal year anyway, so you can adjust everything, so.
Okay, perfect.
Any more questions for Hannah?
Easy peasy budget, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And you'll, you'll need to know Rachel Miller, that's forty-five thousand now.
Yes.
What that number is, so she plugs it in correctly.
I got the paper from Dave and I was like, oh, and I just wrote it right in.
Thank you.
I did.
Thank you, man, thank you.
Emailed, so she shouldn't come in. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Is it Jenny in email, it sounds like?
Okay.
Oh, get it.
Is it Jenny next?
Yeah, I emailed her, but you can go get her if you want.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
So provided you with our new budget for 2025. A lot of it is comparable to what it was last year, as far as the amounts, the expenses and the revenue. Um, just a couple of things that I'll point out. Probably a little further away down on the page, under revenue for program fees, that did increase a little bit, and that's just because we're just seeing an increased use of our programs, like curate application fees. Um, so it was one fifty, and it went to a thousand dollars. And then a couple lines below that, you'll see like childcare admin fee. And, and just what I wanna say too and just clarify is that this is just a draft, this has not been approved by my board, this is just me putting this together. Um, so it'll go to my board at the end of this month for possible approval. So the childcare admin fee, I put twenty thousand dollars in there compared to zero previously. I'm gonna put in twenty thousand dollars because initially this childcare initiative came upon us like so abruptly that we didn't really think about what we were gonna charge for like an admin fee, and so that would be ten thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-five, twenty-six. And then below that, that's a new line item that I added for money market mutual fund, and that's five thousand dollars. With our childcare funds, we do have quite a bit of money sitting in there, and we talked about doing like a CD and stuff, but this money market mutual fund, it might be like a better return on our investment, so that's something that I just found out about that we could possibly do that I will propose to my board, and I just estimated five thousand dollars there. It's a little bit different than a CD because with a CD, you have to have the money tied up for a certain amount of time and stuff, and this, if we need the money, I think the biggest thing with the childcare initiative is we have to make sure that we cash flow everything, and so we can get the money if we need it sooner. And then if you drop down to expenses, oh, I have to go back up. So you also see in there for under private investments and state childcare grants, zero. And so what I did is I just did a separate budget for the childcare, just because it made more sense to me, it just kinda clarifies things with the childcare stuff. I know I put it in the budget last year, but then what it does is it makes us look like we have a lot more money than we really do, and so I just separated everything out. And so I just put zero in there for those, although I have a separate budget for that. And if you guys are interested in, you know, reviewing our childcare budget and helping, investing in that program, I brought that as well, we can talk about that next if you guys want to. And then dropping down to expenses, probably like the only significant difference would be for websites. Last year was three, three thousand seven hundred dollars, and that was just us for paying to host, somebody paying the website provider to host it. And so right now, we are going to be, we actually are in the process of transferring the website over so that we will be our own host for the current time being, and so the fifteen thousand dollars that I put there would be for the hosting and a brand-new website, which I would presume that we would need to move forward with our current website. Um, it just does need a lot of cleaning up to do, and with us hosting and stuff, I don't know, but I have those capabilities to mess around on this platform and make the changes that are needed. Um, so we might just need to bite the bullet and buy a new website. Um, and so you'll see at the bottom there, my net income is to the negative thirty-one thousand, six hundred forty-eight dollars. And so, and so my ask today would be, would be the same as that I asked for last year, the ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars. Um, as you can tell by my budget, it's needed. As I look at my budget and my expenses, there's not a lot of areas that I can take away from other than payroll, which would be wages, and so I still have not filled Tracy's position. And so that might be something that we need to talk about at our board meeting just because I'm not sure currently like how, if this budget supports the position as it was, not that I don't need the help, and I'm not gonna underestimate the help, but maybe a reduced amount of help might be more sustainable for our budget, I guess.
The website is a, what was, what's the Neapolitan today? Are they, are they the ones or?
They are the cheapest ones, and so that's what I put in, the cheapest ones. The other ones are a little bit more expensive, one is a, I mean, and so I just, uh, my board stuff hasn't chosen like which one for sure, but they are the cheapest, I think. They specialize in county government, they specialize in economic development. I would be very happy with them, I think the other ones would be just, do just a good job too, but I'm just looking at the price point, I guess, and to just, I don't know, I guess I've liked the work, and so I thought fifteen thousand dollars was, was pretty reasonable, especially that includes like the hosting and stuff, and some of the other ones, like it did include the hosting, and so that would jump up, you know, the cost, and so. I mean, I, I would like to proceed with Neapolitan.
So on the individual, we've talked about this, I don't mention any names, an individual helping, volunteering to help with some of your stuff?
That's what I was going to just talk about with my board, too, because like the more I look at my budget and stuff, I don't know if I can really afford somebody, as is, you know, 'cause the, so Tracy Cher, she was here before Tracy Cher for, before that it was more of a twenty-hour, was it like fifteen to twenty hours? Um, then it jumped to like thirty-two hours, and then plus healthcare, and so you take away all of those extra things, and that's really a twenty thousand dollars-ish savings to my budget. Um, until someday, maybe I can figure out more ways to increase my revenue, I'm just not really sure that now is the time to offer the same as is to somebody else, but volunteering, yes. I mean, that would be something that, you know, my board, well, like my board to consider just because I do need somebody, and I don't wanna underestimate that help, but I'm not able to really find anybody either, I did find a few people and then they backed out or it didn't work anyway, and it's working now. I, I've been very frustrated, but I've sorted through everything that she's in, and there's just ways for me to be, for us to be more efficient and stuff. And so I would like to look into volunteering, so we just have to make sure we have the right kind of insurance or group comp, like all that sort of thing, just to make sure that in policies, whatever policies we need, 'cause I don't, as of today, like I don't have a volunteer policy, I don't know.
Is there still a program at school where students have release to go to work? Like a?
Work release, work careers?
Yeah, the work release program. And these student, high school students that are looking for.
Sure.
Volunteer hours or need credits for community service or anything like that, they could leave school early, and if you get, I don't know if they do it every day, but I know some people do it every day, that you could get maybe a high school student that may or may not be interested into this career or administrative kind of career that you could possibly work with.
I can reach out to, all the schools have them in the county or Osage or?
I just know Osage, I don't know about Saindansker or.
Saindansker you used to, I don't know.
Just the thought.
Yeah, I can definitely.
You just reach out to their superintendents or principals or their?
Yeah, I can definitely do that.
Yeah, I can definitely do that. And then we wouldn't be consistent, I, um, or I'm sure if you could find the right person, they'd want to come every day.
Okay.
Just an idea.
Yeah.
Definitely.
It would be a good thing to put on a college resume.
Yeah.
One thing I do want to mention to the board that, um, as her being our economic development director, we need her out in the public. So we have to do something. And I've told her that, mentioned that many a times, that she can't just sit in that office and, do that work too. I mean, that's, she needs to be able to get some revenue. She, she needs to be out and about and so, you know, I think she's, you know, 20 hours a week, that worked, I think with Tracy. But that's getting right down there to some bare minimum for you to be gone out with the public and working on things. Uh, it just might, the way I feel, she needs to be out and about.
Yeah.
So those people who come visit the office, and I think the school person is a great idea. And sometimes that individual doesn't need to have outstanding clerical spreadsheet knowledge. If they do, that's great. Or if they're willing to learn it, that's great. But some of it is just some, a presence when somebody comes to the office, that they can take message and answer the phone and then learn some of that stuff as they go. And, and then maybe there's another individual that does have the, the detailed information that maybe that doesn't have to sit in the office, but can help you all with some of the other.
I know, like one day I went into her office and she was printing everything that she needs to send to everyone. Like they could just sit there, print stuff envelopes for you and.
Right.
That could help you.
Yeah.
At least 25% of the time that would help you. I would reach out.
So I mean, right now, I mean, it's, it's working. I am still out in the community and I'm still getting most places. I mean, there was a time where I wasn't getting out as much because I was just tied down to stuff that I needed to take care of here. Um, there's also been times where I work all day and then I go, I go home and take a break and then I work at night. So benefits of being salaried are not really a benefit.
And somebody to answer the phone too, you know, there's calls all the time. And I mean, yeah, that person's gonna, can jot down the phone calls and Jenny can get back to them. But I just, I just hate to, in a lot of these revenues are people that, the banks, utilities, blah, blah, blah. You know, I just think our director should be out there visiting with them, not just one, one time a year to ask for the check. You know, there's things going on that, um, she needs to visit with them. It's just a lot doing both, I think.
Or any of those opportunities where businesses are growing and increasing their employees within our community. All of that, of course, boosts tax money, boosts people coming in.
Right.
You know, or opportunities that you might have to chase after some of those possibilities are going to be minimized if you're doing clerical work, so to speak.
I mean, it's, it's just a matter of prioritizing, you know, obviously when there's growth, that's the priority.
Right.
And then the clerical work sometimes just has to get there when I can get it or if there's deadlines, it's just, so.
And it makes it harder for you to get on people going, okay, we gotta meet this deadline or we, you know, if we tie a volume of time doing those kinds of things.
And I would love the help. I'm not trying to get rid of the help or anything like that. I'm just looking at it from a budget perspective that maybe it just needs to be reduced. And there are things that I could better spend my time on, you know, there's a lot of state programs out there. There's a lot of things that I can do a deeper dive into and, you know, but as my time gets here, which I'm glad that, I mean, I'm not glad that she left. She's not very happy that I left, but I understand that she needs to do what she needs to do. And I'm happy for her, but, um, it just, we both started, so I've been in this role two and a half years now. And so we both started at the same time where she kind of had to figure out her role and I figured out my role. And so it was good for me to, okay, like this is what she's really doing and stuff. And so it was good for me to be like, okay, like now I'm.
You can chase after some opportunities that, yeah. And that's going to be a, a much bigger need, I think, as we move forward too, that, you know, with budgets, like you say, being what they are all across the board, the more we can bring in to support the spend, the better off we are.
Update on the Maple Heights apartments, you know, at the first of the year, they said substantial completion by January 1. You know any more since then? What's that?
I did not, I didn't know, so you took the touch bar at the meeting last.
It was, it was in December, the last one I heard, and they said there's supposed to be substantial completion.
It was supposed to be, yeah, the initial target, it was like December 31st or whatever. And so last time I talked to like Ron Fisk, he said that it was, and then they've been moving forward like a lot, you know, with, I know it's been busy there and they were working, you know.
Didn't know if you knew anymore, so.
Not anything different. I know that they're gonna have an open house. And I, I do need to reach out to, I forgot her name, Heather. I lost my contact, I, or, but I'll reach out to her because I mean, she'll want those funds. But I also told her last time I talked, she knows that you guys have those funds for her and stuff. And so I told her once she gets more complete to get ahold of me. And so she has not yet, so.
When I talked to Brock, it had substantial completion as the, the target term where, that's, you know, we aren't going to release anything until that also.
Right, yeah. I'll reach out to Heather and get a better update and just, so.
And then the tour assembly that was here yesterday, did you get contact information?
I did, yep, yep.
Okay, great.
Yep, I did. So, and then if you guys want me to kind of be the point of contact or have any information to exchange back and forth, feel free to give me your, your input or responses and I can send them off to her as well regarding like the reviewing of the, of the directory or something, the magazine, so, yep.
Speaking on that, and maybe, uh, we just have the historical society here that maybe, I don't know if you have Chris's contacts, um, Cashmere, the president chair, whatever. But, um, their address and that book and stuff is still at the CRC, so.
Yeah.
Something like that would be good to get that.
Yeah, I'll do that. And then I was gonna look through it myself just to, and just compare. I can compare what's, what I can find on there, just to make sure that there's more updates, so I'll do that as well.
I want to make a note, mountain goats, because that's something I hope that's in there, but that'd be Derek Mouser.
Yep.
They might, uh, maybe, they, they have any in there.
And the conservation board, I mentioned the publication to them last night too. And so, you know, with their trails and, and updating campgrounds and that kind of thing. So I gave them your, you know, the names to contact you, because I would assume you'd want, you know, maybe rather than coming from multiple different areas.
Right.
So maybe contact Mike out there.
So yes, it sounds like we do want you to be the point of contact for that.
Yeah, no problem. I just planned on it, so I, it's fine.
And I did happen to reach out to Heather right before the holidays because I just, there's just been trucks and trailers and people there sundown and, um, she just emailed me back and said that she'd get ahold of me after the holidays if we wanted to do another tour or something, so. But no, nothing on the completion or anything like that, so.
And that was from when you got that?
Uh, right before the holidays.
Well, they can get ahold of us when they want the money.
Oh, exactly.
Don't need to be throwing it out.
Just wait. I, I didn't.
Just wait.
I didn't offer it, you know.
Would you like to go over that with childcare?
Yes, um, did you, alright, so. Almost over and out of the corner, but you already got.
Thank you. I was feeling cheated already.
Have you been sitting here the whole time? No, oh, I didn't. Sometimes it's here.
She was as quiet as a mouse coming in.
Alright, so this is our childcare budget. And so just to recap for you guys, and I know Pam, you weren't here, so just to kind of bring you up to speed. Um, about a year ago-ish, a little over a year ago, we were presented with opportunity to participate in like a pilot program to assist with our, with childcare solutions. And so, um, what we did was the state had a grant at the time that was a one-to-one match that said if you, that they would match any private investments. Um, and then those, um, investments would go towards like childcare wages because childcare workers, um, do not make a very livable wage. And so what this program does is it just boosts their wages up a little bit. Um, in efforts of retaining their current employees and then also like attracting new people to the field. And so what we were able to do and come up with in Mitchell County was a $2 per hour wage increase. And so, um, we were able to raise $333,367 that first year. And so that was, that's 2024. And you'll see that in that top part of the budget. And then, um, so our state grant, that's done with. It's not even part of any of this. We spent it and it's long gone. And so the 2024, um, budget, it looks good. With the net income of $101,367. Um, and then our 2025 budget, right now it's, and this is just kind of my best guess. It could be way off, but it's just really a guessing game because like I don't really know how many, um, employees the daycare are going to be able to employ, but I just took the data from the previous year and just assumed that we're gonna at least have 12 new workers and then I considered them full-time. And then, um, that $50,000 of anticipated growth, that number looks large there. Um, but what that would get us would be is almost, would be us 12 full-time workers for, um, combined for all, all the facilities combined. So, um, in our childcare wage enhancement program, we included the Osage, all of the four licensed facilities, so the Osage Community Daycare, Weesangs, Little Cats and Stacyville Kids Care, now Little Cats technically is in Howard County, just a straightaway from Mitchell County. And so we went ahead and included them in our program just because, um, the daycare is highly used by Mitchell County residents. And, um, we, Howard County was part of the pilot program too, um, but they didn't raise nearly as much money. And so we just took on Riceville because we did have a lot of more money to spend. And, um, and so we just decided to keep them at least for this year again. Then we'll just reassess every year. So as we look at next year's budget, the 2025, I am negative $25,916. Just, that's my best guess. And so I didn't know if you guys would be interested in helping, um, that program.
Do you have like the asking number?
Twenty, it'd be like 25,000 or 26,000 dollars. It's just the, and it's the best guess. This number could be different, I just don't know.
Are there any numbers that show how many, uh, Riceville daycares kids are from Howard and, and from Mitchell? Is there a split that can give it a percentage?
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be split like 50%, so. And a lot of the new enrollments that Riceville was, a lot of their new enrollments, they were from, they were either from or living in Mitchell County.
Can you check that?
I can get you, I have some that I can, I can send it to you or go grab it. Right now. Um, but overall, um, so we've been doing this about a year, but this step doesn't include like a whole year, it's more like nine months. So the data, um, reflects 31 additional children that are being served in Mitchell County. And then there's 12 additional childcare professionals that have joined the childcare industry. And so that is the data, the program is working like it's supposed to work. Um, we've had over $1 million pledged to the program. I have 37 total investors from businesses, foundations, citizens and public dollars. So as you guys probably remember, and if you don't, and Pam, because you're new, um, we weren't able to access, in that initial grant, we weren't able to access public dollars. And so it was really the business community that had to come forward and, um, and they really did step up and, um, invest in the program. And so now as I'm looking at my budget and hearing, I'm a little bit sorry, I need help.
So the, to back up just a little bit, you, you, you mentioned the, the increase in kids that are in daycare. That was total for Mitchell County or that was, that was all the daycares?
That's combined, yeah.
Thirty-seven, was that what the number?
Thirty-one, is that the thirty-one?
Thirty-one, yeah.
Okay. Um, and then, uh, business investments, we had $333,000 last year and we're at $137 this year. So are the businesses not, uh, is eager to contribute this year?
So when I did this, um, we asked for like a three-year pledge. And so that initial year, some businesses just, just wanted to do like a one-year pledge and they just did, some of them did like a lot more, like I think the hospital for example gave a lot more, but it was just like one year. And they weren't going to give like year two and year three. And so the business community, so it was just some didn't want to do a three-year pledge. Um, the businesses really like the matching stuff from the state. And so sometimes it's been harder for other communities too that are part of this pilot program. It's just been, the feedback that I got from them is that it's been hard for them to, um, try to get businesses to invest in the program just because they really do like those matches from the state. Um, and so some, like I asked for a three-year pledge, other communities are struggling and they didn't. And so they just asked for one, so they had to start their campaign over. And then that's where they're struggling. Um, and so, also with this, that $333,000, um, the city of Osage gave $100,000, but because it couldn't come directly from the city, because there couldn't be public dollars, they used TIF where they matched the business. So like for instance, um, like A to Z, if they would have gave less $50,000, then the city could match that $50,000. So then there was like that extra $100,000 that was given to us by like the city of Osage. Um, and that's why that number is probably a lot higher there as well.
Was anything like that approached now then for this next year? Those that last year only did pledge one year? Cause like you say, you know, several businesses, not even within Mitchell County, but across the country are realizing that supporting your daycare is, is vital.
Right.
To keeping your employees anymore. So that is more, becoming more and more attractive to businesses to, to show that they're supporting daycare in some way, shape or form.
Right.
Within their community.
Right, and I can, and my plan is to prefer like reach out to Riceville because when this all started, we didn't know in the beginning that we were including Riceville. So I have not reached out to Riceville for, and there's, I know it's small, but I know there's still business, there are some businesses over there. And so my plan is to reach out to some of those, which are those Riceville businesses to, um, get them to invest as well. Um, could I go back and revisit the people that maybe didn't pledge year two and three? I can probably go back and ask them, they can tell me no.
And it may just be a budgeting thing on their part. I'm thinking that, you know, no, we're not gonna, you know, kick out two and three until we know where we sit. But if we, you know, I guess the worst they can tell us is no.
Right.
And it benefits, you know, our, like I say, it seems to really benefit our local businesses.
Right.
Seeing impacts of that in several other areas.
So one of the thoughts is that if, yeah, we're going to help all of the citizens. we're going to help all of the situation where we do the same thing that, okay, we're willing to contribute this amount of money. If, same thing with what you mentioned with the state. Get local businesses to contribute and let them know that Mitchell County is willing to contribute up to X amount of dollars if there's matching funds from the public, rather than the government just always throwing money out to people. Is the thought.
I kind of think the same thing should happen between Mitchell and Howard County too. I mean, Howard County can just sit there and say, we're not going to be, because Mitchell County is, well, we're having just as much trouble with our budgets and trying to make ends meet that. And I know it's a little different scenario over there with it being attached to the school that they do have kids come and this and that. But, I mean, to me, we've been the nice guy by helping Riceville out throughout things. And I, just this morning was in my, you know, they, I was not real happy the other day when we talked to the sheriff and then actually Rachel, that they got council members and a mayor. And we've been pretty generous over there. And why are we left out of contact? But then they got their up and running and I just, I really, I mean.
So you bring up Howard County and I, I agree with that. And I also, I think personally to look at what we contribute to any of the cities as far as, this would be an example of the Riceville. What are you contributing to this also? And that can kind of apply to something we're going to do for Osage or St. Anzelle or Stacey as far as, well, maybe not just the Mitchell County thing that we're just giving money. What are you doing as a city council also to help yourselves? So this could be another example where Howard County, what are you doing? Riceville, what are you doing? You know, there's some things to think about.
Any more questions for Jenny?
In, in 2000, and I was going to put, so 2026, like that budget, what it looks like too, it's, I already have $137,717 towards that year.
What's that number for what?
So for two, so for 2026, I already have, I have the $137,717 pledged for year 2026. So in 2020, in 2020, and I'm jumping, I'm jumping that way ahead. Yeah, okay. See, I almost thought I didn't need to ask for any money, but then I was like, well, when I did this budget and stuff, I was like, I think where I'm going to need the most money is in 2026, where like my best figure is I figured around like $130,000 I'm going to be short. So next year I am going to need a lot more money. And so thus, you know, asking businesses. At the same time, they're going to probably ask me, well, what has Mitchell County done? You know, what has the county done?
Is this, is this getting into, I don't know, our approach here? Are we doing, we have daycares, we have three, three daycares. Riceville, Staceyville, Osage, St. Anzelle, excuse me. Are we, is this program being used for any private daycares?
So, no, not, this budget does not reflect in-home providers. We did include the in-home providers like on the state budget just because we did have an ample amount of money. But the Childcare Coalition members decided not to at this time just because we have to think about the sustainability of the program. And we do want to do the $2 per hour across three years. And so as you can see, we're, we're struggling already. And so, you know, it is up to us if we want to include in-home providers. However, in talking with Sherry Penny, we work very closely with her, with Iowa Women's Foundation. And what she had told us is that typically, like other providers or other EDCs are focusing on like the in-home or the licensed facilities only because when they do the breakdown for in-home, that typically their wage is going to be a more livable wage than, I mean, some of these employees of the daycares. I mean, literally their wages are $10 an hour. Or maybe if they're, in their lifetime, maybe they're getting $14 an hour. Whereas like in-home daycare, I mean, they don't have necessarily the overhead. Maybe they have health, but maybe their wage is going to be a much more livable. And so, no, the, we did not include them as of now. Not that we can't at some point, and not that they're not important because they are. We still want to, we still want them to all stay in business and we want to support them because we really need people to go to work. And if they don't have the daycare, they can't go to work. So they're still very important.
Well, when you talk about $26,000 and then when you jump to over $100,000, there's, there's a change as far as, and I know this, you're talking next year, but that's, you know, four times more than what you're talking about now. So that kind of changes funding on our part a little bit. And if there's only four that we're looking at, it might be easier in the future to fund four locations as compared to a number of them.
Right. And that four, this is just for that four, so that number that I gave you, like I didn't include any as of now. I included nothing for those in-homes, which, I mean, just some quick math, we only, there's like 11 in-home childcare providers. And then, you know, say two bucks an hour. Typically, people work 2,080 hours a year. So really that would be $4,000 for each one. So that would add probably about another $50,000. If we were to, and not that we would have to do the full $2, but just to kind of give you a number there. Could be a dollar, then it would be $25,000. But I think again, the focus is on the licensed facilities and Wizings. They had that, and they're still working on. They had that 55 slot expansion, or maybe it was more than that. And so they still have, they're working on finding, trying to find employees so they can fill those spots.
One thing I'll add for you is to, you had mentioned a few minutes ago about what has Mitchell County done? We have given each daycare $100,000 to $150,000 for expansions and building. I don't want people to forget that.
Right.
So we knew that, so now.
Right. I mean, I just know that this is probably going to come up where before, like I know some of the businesses are like, well, why can't the, why can't the cities and counties get money and stuff? And, and maybe, and they're going to probably be asking me is like, well, what has Mitchell County done, you know, even childcare? But yes, you're right. They, you guys have given $100,000, $150,000 to the daycare for the facilities.
All right, any more questions?
One last thing. Childcare and so it's like, it's always these three things that come up like all the time. Whatever business I'm talking to, it's always, it's always housing. It's always childcare availability and it's always workforce. And the main issues is there's plenty of jobs here in Mitchell County. There's good-paying jobs, there's career jobs. But at the end of the day, I mean, they can offer positions and those families sometimes can't move here just because there's not adequate housing or there's not available daycare. And so just keep that in mind. It's like all those three things are related and I hear about them all the time. All the time, every day. Sometimes well within the day.
Well, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Do you know if anyone's coming for social service?
No.
So they sent us their budget.
Okay.
So I don't know fully who's all involved, but you know, social services is kind of combined with other counties. So when they do their billing, currently, I don't know if it will change. It goes through Troy County and then they bill us out quarterly. So this is the one where last year they didn't turn one in when they sent it to us. That's why when we made our amendment earlier this year, we added them in there.
Oh, okay.
But so they did, this Erin Casilla actually did fill it out for us. For the most part, keeping everything the same. We haven't received yet. I mean, we already in January haven't received a quarterly report from them. So we, at some point we'll get it. But that's the one where if they're late, maybe here soon, hopefully we'll get the first two quarters. But the last two quarters, we might not get till July. So it kind of sucks, I guess you'll say. I mean, a carryover is over. So sometimes this year, this was clear, we'll pay next, this is clear.
Okay.
Yep, so they're asking $5,750, which I guess is an increase just with their computer maintenance. $500 for contribution, it says Blacktop County.
Okay.
I don't know how that is. Doesn't look like we've actually had to spend that.
In the best, yeah.
And then for their revenues, they are guessing $5,000. Pretty simple, yeah. Before we get into the 99, does anyone need a break? Because this is going to be long.
Yeah, I'm going to go get some water. Is that all right?
Yep. Okay. Get some water. Restrooms, water.
Yep.
I gotta get water.
Yeah.
It'll be a little short today. I don't want to say short, but I tried running my balance to achieve and stopped putting some numbers on it. So it's, it looks skewed. Like that, that's their expenditure in the current year, which makes a huge difference when it's showing zero.
Kind of.
Yeah. So like it shows our carryover balancing 88%, which is obviously not true.
I'd go with that.
So I'll have to figure out this.
What's your revenue from 99?
What?
What's your revenue for 99?
$100,000. Should be. Were you going to bring your computer back? I was going to, but it's not getting a remote connection. And I was going to be, mine was coming up to say that you gave up a solutions call and we were testing our system for the recon file that was, you know. But we got the recon file then.
Yeah, I was going to say.
No, that's a different problem. The state wanted to switch their, they always want to switch things. They want to ask for more of certain things. So it's a new construction basically report that.
I'm going to take you back.
Increased value for tax district. Information only, but you have to do. So they had to create a whole new report.
Something else that I thought of too, when I went back to my office, is like some of the businesses, like the three-year pledge, like they didn't do, like what they did is they gave us like the three-year pledge, like all that first year because of the match, because they wanted us to get maximize like the state grant. And so they said, well, we're just going to give you the three-year pledge all of that first year. So then we got more money from the state.
I see. So the X's are ones that did it the first year and the ones that aren't X. May have done the three-year pledge or may have not done it.
This was the Riceville.
This is only Riceville.
That's just Riceville. That's just giving you data like who's accessing the Rice, because Riceville again is in Howard County. It's a county, but that's just the data that we collected, you know, to justify keeping them as part of our program for this particular year. And I think if we, we're just going to have to look at the sustainability of our program. Like if we can't afford them, then we can't afford them. So.
Thank you, Jenny. All right. Thanks for letting us take a quick break. Can you back on? Where would you like to start? Page one expenses.
The page one.
I'll just, and I'll go through them kind of quick if there's no changes to them. It kind of works. So on the first page, everything stayed the same.
Okay, you have some question marks, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Start very, very first one. Jaws of Life, one time at an Osage City Council meeting, the Osage Fire Chief said that they're changing things and the possibility that they would not be asking that from us anymore.
Okay.
So that might, that might be a zero.
Okay.
That's going to have to be looked into. So Todd or myself can look into that and see if that's going to happen or not.
Okay.
And then Elder Bridge also, that's, you got 98.8. I have a note here, 93.93. So I don't know why I put that in there. But is that all they, is that, did they request 98, 98 or was it?
93.93 was their budget for 23.24.
Elder Bridge. I had it down that they requested 93.93 this time, unless I had it down wrong. And we don't have to, we just, we can look into that, so.
I'll look at that one.
Yeah.
I was trying to write them down as I came in, so. All right, other writing, the rest is the same. Next page. It did increase the cap year time, well, it's listed as time clock expenses, but it's with the postage machine. That, the three kind of all go together. Postage is one up. I don't know yet if that's really still enough. I guess I didn't really pay attention to the, the zoning and sanitation department one. If they're, between them and if conservation continues to do out their big bulk mailings, we're going to need to probably amend that, which is fine. I think at least planning and zoning, they get reimbursed or, well, sanitation gets reimbursed and that's the side for mailing them out. So then we can increase bulk of the offset, but.
You have hotspots too, what's up, what's up for it?
So that's.
Those, those little hotspots.
Yeah, those two little black hotspots. I think maybe you guys have one and then Rich maybe has one or two.
Are we even using them? I mean, the one sitting behind me plugged in forever and that's, are we even using them?
I know Rich uses the ones out there. We don't have any more in our office. It might be something if, for anyone to, I know, I've seen in the past Kenny used when they were testing things, so it wasn't connected to our Wi-Fi.
Okay.
But.
So there's only two.
For the two of you in that worship.
So one's behind my desk.
Yes, and then Richie there has one or two of them for when they're out doing their tablet thing that they're setting up.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Cell phones do the same. Consulting needs, consulting service needs. I, we've been roughly between 57 to 65-ish. It's kind of the miscellaneous catch-all. Um, it's kind of the miscellaneous catch-all. Um, that I did, I did tell Jim yesterday, I added the mail services. So last year and the current year, that's where I've budgeted the mailing that goes out, um, for the budget. Those sheets that don't really make any sense, but we have to mail out to everyone. And we increased it this year, uh, that was with the, I don't know what to say, better renewal amendment. Some of the extra fees that were in there, got put in there as well.
Can I step back for just a second, just to ask, um, there's the ledger accounts that, for the copier, time clock, postage that end in a 97 and the one that ends in a 98. What's the difference between those two?
Um, so ones, like the hotspots get put under, they were put under that because when we had the time clock. And then the next one, postage meter expenses, um, I believe that's the different equipment that we buy for the actual postal machine. So the liquid glue stuff, more tape, that type of stuff, if you're thinking.
And if we go into telephones, bro, we're gonna have a new telephone system. Would the telephone 2,000 go away then, or?
Um. If we go like all into the IT department?
Yeah, it's just a broad question, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I think if it, this is my, my opinion, and we don't have to. To me, it makes sense, I think maybe trying to, all the physical phones get put in one department because we'd have more bills instead of having to break it down every time. And I'm sure they could break it down for us. And then still have a, this is the cell phone one, but if there are still cell phones per department, that those would still stay. But, I mean, that's true. Own you, like when they bill as it's broken down by department, so they've already done that part of it.
So if it was all under one, can both be in IT, would that 2,000 go away or no?
Then it should be able to go away, yeah. Yeah. Next page. The care of graves, I did increase it by a thousand. Um, I've talked with different severities that I believe will have a few more turned in. Might not be a huge amount, um, I anticipate a few less than, just, I don't know, between 500 and 1,000, so. Added up there. And if I did my figuring correct, um, I think account development was asking the 97,750 again. And then the 57.5, that was that remaining balance from that original TIF. That, if I'm not, I could be wrong, if, I think it had have already been committed, or if it wasn't under the projects that were already in the TIF. If that makes sense, that first plan, then that money can go back to the TIF fund and help pay for the bonds.
And that, that was for the, uh, park in Staceyville, where that originally came from.
Yeah, there was like three or four projects on there, I would say. Um, either way though, if that was to be done, it'd be kind of like, you write an expense from this fund to go back to the TIF fund then, so.
Okay.
We'd have to show it either way, even though it's just kind of moving in.
Yeah, but you'd show, you'd show an expense of 57.50 then out of this line item.
That's where, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Um, the tourism, and then the, so the audit, um, I looked back in the agreement that we had, and it was 45.8. So I have to do that, which I did have confirmation from her, she's coming next week, um, Monday.
She, you did have, she's coming Monday?
Yep, the group with us is coming.
Are we, are we, is for us or for you?
Probably mostly me and then other departments that they contact as they go through, so.
Okay.
Yep.
That's the first visit, um?
Yeah. And I believe theirs is a little different than the previous, or the previous kind of came on and out for the months and did a little bit here and there, where they're gonna bring in their group.
Do it as one-shot deal.
As fast as they, not, when I say as fast, I kind of don't go through and miss stuff, I mean, but they're gonna be here and do everything that they can right away.
I don't know, this, but she's kind of a, come into the room and conquer and get it done.
Yep, so it will look a little different than in the past, but that's okay.
So then you just put them in a room separately for them to?
No, they get to sit in our office and.
Oh.
I don't, I don't want to say it's like a, I don't know, I don't know really what to tell them. Yeah, sometimes they'll go to the chargees office when they're going through stuff there.
Okay.
Um, at least in the past, that's how they've done it. If they, and depending on how many they bring, I may out.
Yeah, I do know, yes, if they have a team of people.
Chairs.
Sure.
That might be, yeah.
Otherwise, we have like four chairs and that's about it.
Yeah. Well, and if you're trying to conduct business, I'm sure that makes it difficult too.
Yeah, I think it's been. Um, NACO, I may put in miles and miles, I say dues, healthy harvest.
We've gotten into the tourism, so it, it, it's, is that, we don't, I remember, we don't really have a specific line item to pay for tourism. We have one that revenues, we're not payout, so.
So the way it's been done, um, this tourism line was used for healthy harvest.
Okay.
And then on the previous one, previous page, there was the 500 tourism, and that went to Central Ohio Tourism.
Okay.
Not saying that that's where they're wrong, but that's how they've always paid them out.
Okay.
Um, NACO, $450 every year. Um, contributions, uh, the last two years, you can see they look kind of off, I guess I'll call it. But that's just been the contributions that we've given up on beyond. Um, so the ones that we, I tried to write some of the ones that we have, which maybe we can lower. Um, I know Soil and Water was requesting a decent amount, less than what they have in the past.
Um, sorry, I'm so full of questions, but I just, that's just the way it is. So, uh, backup one regards to the NACO dues from 450.
Mm-hmm.
So in our budget, the supervisor's budget, there's a line item for dues and memberships, I believe it's for 450, so. Did we pay for the NACO dues out of the supervisor budget? And so is that, is it needed in here if we've already paid for it out of our budget, or?
Um, I can double check.
Okay.
If it's the same thing or just different.
Okay.
Um. I feel like your boot must be different.
We have 500 down for the dues and memberships in our.
Do you have the grant?
Yeah.
Expense summary from the last one we sent out?
Um, yeah, I mean, so what we used last year, so we used 400 out of it, so that's what maybe think it was the NACO dues that.
And I know we just paid it, and I know it was 450, but these sheets were probably printed before we paid it.
What do you want, what do you want to look up?
Um, like on the boards, is it still at 400, or did that go up at all?
Well, it.
And you?
Um, dues and memberships was 1,000 budgeted for this fiscal year for us.
How much, did it say how much has been used?
400.
So I'm gonna say that it came out of this back one without looking.
It came out of the 99s?
The 99s. I know we just paid it, right, because this was printed, what, 12.3, and we paid it in the last month.
So if it came out of the 99s, it should have came out of our budget then, coming out of our.
Our budget.
They've been taking it out of the 99s, because I think everyone uses NACO. I mean, I get all the emails and everything, that.
I'm not objecting, I'm not, I don't need to be doing that, I'm just confused, I thought, so if it comes out of our budget line item, would it come out of the 99s? I mean, I'm thinking, are we, are we entering it twice, is guess what I'm saying?
Budget-wise.
I don't know what the 400, I'd have to go back and look at what the 400 is.
Okay, that was my other question there.
Unless you guys got a bill for 400 for NACO? I don't think so.
Well, I, I remember got an email, I think I forwarded to you and I.
Yeah, but I had got that one too, and so that's why we, when we paid it, but I thought it was worth it.
Okay, I just didn't want to enter it twice, that's the thing.
Yeah, I'll let you go on.
All right. And then on the next one, I'll say this every time when we talk about watersheds. I'm part of the Upper Cedar Watershed Management Authority. And watersheds to me are, should be managed by the state. A lot of watersheds want to have counties and cities fund them. I've only been willing to contribute to that procedure by, at $100. I see we have the WOFC down as 500, and I know there's some other ones in the county that.
Can we go down it?
Yes.
That WOFC is for the WOFC days.
WOFC days?
And where that one is.
Okay.
But I think it's.
I will shut up. Yeah, I have a problem with those watersheds. Nothing gets done in Metro County for what we contribute to watersheds, so that's why I have a problem with it, okay.
You're good.
Shut my mouth.
No, you're good. Yeah, so I think, I don't know what you guys want to do with the contributions there. Um, those are ones I know of, I know sometimes people come throughout the year and ask too, which I think is why it's always kind of been.
Well, with the Heritage Days with St. Ansgar, and I said that earlier, how much does St. Ansgar give to their own, uh, is that, is that their museum, the 4,000?
Uh, yeah.
So how much does St. Ansgar give to their own museum? I guess I would wonder that.
Mm-hmm.
Same with the senior citizens, does St. Ansgar give anything to that, or is that just simply a Metro County thing that's being funded? I would have that question, yeah.
Good question. I don't have an answer.
Sorry, I just want to say that.
Yep. Um, otherwise, I love the contribution for senior citizens and the main society, I see usually we wait on that one if they send any invoice to us. We didn't get one last year, and then we haven't received one yet this year, but I kept it there.
Actually, is there even a humane society in North Carolina?
Does Main Society one not there anymore? Yeah, it is.
Are you sure?
Is it?
I think it was got there, or moved out.
Odd. I mean, I always hear them on the radio when they're doing their spiel on 98.7.
Okay, then that must be.
Maybe, maybe they're wrong. And then the first one on the next page, um, that's the catch-up line we have to do. Um, so I know we talked about this in 23.24, about paying around the, a little more, because GIS seems like it's paying a little more, but um, the amount of work in there is kind of extensive. Um, and it was kind of waiting on for a certain project to kind of get started and whatnot in there. So I actually, as I was going through this the other day, I said, oh, shoot, we haven't been doing that yet this year. So Lindsay and I talked and kind of got it figured out, the catch-up, what it is per pay period. Um, it kind of comes out, it's a little bit more, but how Melissa's safety gets paid out. Um, it's so many hours per pay period. Um, so we can do, beginning next week, we can do the catch-up for the first 14 pay periods that we've had, and then it will begin on next week as well. So like next week, it would show us two, like one big catch-up, and then because it's a normal pay period, it'll show one there too. Um, safety coordinator, the 3.3% increase there. Otherwise, kept the direct deposit, I mean, the GIS mapping, um, seems like that keeps going up. So I estimate 10,000 so far. And then, I'd have to go back, there's a few IT charges that we probably can switch over to IT that are still coming out at 2,800. Um, it was like last year we ended at 2,600, and we're currently at 2,000. But that might be an item that we just completely switch over to IT. And that's where when Casey was here, um, we created the IT budget, because that wasn't a thing before, so everything was in the 99s and it was actually confusing. So it must just be one or two things that is still just getting charged here until they're swapped over. So I can, I'll check out what it is, but then maybe add the 2,800 on the IT side and remove it from here. If you do that. Um, next page is insurance. Um, so a little while ago, which it looks like here, seeing I can make it inactive. Gets taken out general supplement, so the general basic. Um, secondary roads, I currently plugged it in for the general basic transfer at 75%, which comes up $112,000. Next page gets into the American Rescue Plan Act. So my thought was, I mean, we, I believe Lawrence will get all expense out in the next month or two, whenever they get their window done. And then we committed the rest of the money to IT, so, um, I didn't know if that would get done in this fiscal year, or if we'll still have that 10,000 number at the beginning of July. So if we do expense it, then I can take it out, but if we aren't going to, then I guess I kept it.
Okay.
In the filing page, the 70,000 is a contribution to EMA. The NCRRC is that amount with NACO. And then we have round the FICA and IFRS for GIS. Um, the crisis intervention contribution, 1,000. And then we have the safety coordinator for Melissa, the FICA and IFRS. And the next one is my least favorite line item. Um, trying to budget for insurance for our landfill, economic development, and retirees. And which, I'm not gonna be on, also more than traditional, but, um, last year we ended at 190,000. Right now, it's looking like we'll be fine. Um. The one thing that kind of offsets it is because in the past, it's just been the economic development director that's been on insurance. Right now, well, not now. And then we were, we have two, both of them around there, which then increases the amount, you're 13, 14,000 each year added on. But right now, since there hasn't been anyone in there, it's kind of leveled, so it's kind of, I don't want to say okay, but that's, I don't know if we keep that at one. And let me add too, we get reimbursed too, so like, we have it on expense and on the revenues. But I don't know if 185 sounds good, or if we still up it a little bit just to have a little cushion, or how to. No, it's a total guessing game.
The 185 included two in economic development?
Well, and so if you see last year, it actually ended up going to 190.
Uh-huh.
But like, we're okay right now because, I mean, Tracy's been gone for a couple of months, so it.
And all you have is the same bill right now.
Correct, yeah, for economic development.
And even if there was a second one that came in there in a month or two, we've already got, well, we're in this fiscal year, it's true.
And then you gotta think about, are there, are there any employees that might retire and still stay in the plans? What's about there?
But, oh, yeah.
And again, they still, they do pay for their insurance, but you gotta put out the expense and on the revenue.
So that's an in and an out, right? That's what you're referring to, you're talking, you're pulling it in as revenue.
But you gotta, you gotta list it as far as for.
Yeah.
The yes and out.
Right, and then she's got to list it on the revenue side as well, that estimate, the estimate. However.
Yeah, that'd be good.
So I mean, we're, I don't want to say worst case, usually you do a budget amendment anyways, at least on this one, it's an in and out, so it's not, you're pulling from your carryover number.
Right.
That's why I wrote the same 185.
True.
Um, so the next one, my little notes there, our side account, traditional plan. Um, we're gonna be doing a budget amendment here soon anyways, but we're gonna have to amend that. So we called our side account, um, that's basically at, what's that person's name? Can you all, we've not known. Um, so our buy-down plan for the traditional, where the third party sends us the checks after we're over our $1,000 out of pocket. So then it's up to $5,000 that they could, we have to pay from our general supplemental to our side account, which then the side account, we pay online to the third party to make those checks happen for the employees. If that makes sense? So, this year has been a rough year for, as a whole, I guess you'll say. As of December, there, we're at eighty-nine percent, so we'd already have sixty-two thousand. So I guess on eighty-five, I think I was trying to figure out how many single plans we had, taking it times four thousand, which again, you don't know because anyone can change their health plan in May, so.
So it makes me question, we're apparently very healthy by the insurance company, but then this number doesn't really show that, but.
And we have been in the past, but this is just the year that we've had a few extra things happen. So I don't know if you guys are good with eighty-five, or if you think, you know? And again, it's a total guessing game, you can switch from year to year. Last year was sixty, the year before sixty-five. And then previous to that, they never started the self-fund account, so. That's where we started creating it. And then, I had, I don't know if I brought it down here, contacted Judy Gaimper with Heartland to try and get an estimate of rates. There was some, so like, property insurance, it was an additional fifteen thousand. It does get broken down between a couple departments. But I added eighteen thousand on there. Workman's cap was about the same. The boiler insurance went up ten percent, but left at thirty-two. Inland marine was roughly the same, same with public officials liability and law enforcement.
Do you know, you know, this has come up at ISAC a few different times, and maybe the board knows, maybe you know, they've talked about, in certain situations, public officials need to have a bond, you need to be bonded. And so, that line item, is, does that cover that, that we don't have to be bonded because of that?
No, I think, I mean, I can check with Judy, I know there's, I did have a two thousand to twenty-five hundred. Because of townships too, for the trustees and clerks. I'll verify with her, I think it does, I don't think this covered it. I thought she said there was something else that we can do though.
But didn't you look to move your word bond there?
Well, I don't know if it's everyone though, so do you?
Just deputies?
What was that?
Just the deputies, that'd be.
Yeah, and I think it was like auditor, treasurer, recorder, sheriff, and attorney, maybe, or something.
And not the board?
Yeah, I could be wrong.
Seems like.
And then the question is, how much you're supposed to legally be bonded for each? Where I think the one that we were on, and I think it's with Nationwide, it was like a total amount versus like so much per, if that makes sense?
It says somewhere in the code too, and I thought it was specific to any elected official we need to be bonded.
Yeah.
But I really didn't understand it, I've never understood it.
And I know we have to give the claim and whatever to like the auditing firm, so like they, they've looked at it and they've never said anything, so then that's why I've kind of, I don't want to say let it go, because they looked at the claim, so we'll find out.
All right.
With Elizabeth and yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd ask, but I think as a board, we may be, it's such a big umbrella, we may be covered under that umbrella. The board members. But I would, I, I just, because I'm speak, at the school, it was the same, we had that question too of that, but, so we contacted the insurance company and they, they said it's, there's such a wide umbrella that certain things are just uncovered under that, so, but I would check.
Yeah, I will.
Think that there's, we could have to be covered some way.
Yep. Let's see, insurance county share, I believe we were having one of the, of the deputies coming out of this.
I think he's got, I think on the sheet he showed it too.
Yes, and so we, we have switched it, and so I think that's what that fourteen was for. We didn't use any of it last year, but we did use it the two years before. So I'll just verify if that's, that one, if it is, then we can take that fourteen thousand off. And then the secondary roads, transfer from rural basic. I didn't write it on here, so I want to just double check. I'm thinking that I kept it at.
Took it to eighty-three one time, but I don't remember, it went back down to seventy-five now?
Um, I have it at eighty-three. Right now. Here's my hot topic for today, I guess. So tip, all of our bond payments, internal, external loan, and then all the rebates, comes up to just over six point six million. And then, Jim and I were talking, I'm going to kind of skip all over the place here for a minute, so. The revenues for the ninety-nines. Or tip, comes out to, and I base that on evaluations times the current levy. Comes out to like four point five million, so huge deficit, I guess you can say. So today, we went and verified our current balance, and then I looked in the tip file to see which wind farms still have to pay, or like A to Z, I'll say elevator have to. Added in their second half payments, and then added in the anticipated four point five minus what we have to pay this year and what we have to pay next year, and we're going to be right around like three hundred thousand, so.
Three hundred thousand, excess or short?
Excess.
Excess, okay.
Like, I don't want to use the term excess in case people think the wrong way, but committed to future bond payments.
Okay, all right. Because I mean, she was supposed to figure that out, that the timeline for how, how we're paying the internal loan and outside funding.
Yeah.
Lined up with what needed to go.
Which makes sense, because between the carry, like this year's money and next year's, it works.
All right, that makes me feel much better, I was a little nervous when you said that yesterday.
Yeah, I was, so it's.
I was a little nervous.
I haven't, I can't plug it, I don't, the form I like to use upon balance worksheet, it's not calculating right, it's not putting in the expenditures, so. I'm going to have to have that fixed because it shows a like eighty-eight percent carryover, which is not average.
Let's just go with that.
I know, that would be, don't fix that.
Yeah, so it had just under three hundred thousand, is that on that six fifty-five ninety-nine line?
Nope, that's not on there anywhere.
Okay, so what, where?
So.
Oh, I have to do the math and that's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So on the bottom of that, after the tip, I have the local option. So I left the hundred thousand in there, if you guys can do the info lot, I can adjust that one as well. I do always budget the courthouse half in tip, half in local option.
Okay, I want to talk about that just a little bit.
Yep.
So I was thinking a year ago, we changed that so that it was coming all out of tip, but I thought we did that then, we.
And I think still on the figures, when Heidi does it, they, they recommend to put it out of, half of it on the local option because it tends and it brings out more in the tip part.
Okay.
And last year, we did take it all out of there. We still wanted it this way, but we took it all out of tip.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, so I just put it on here just in case.
If you.
And we can amend it.
If you, if you do start taking out of local option, I appreciate you telling me so that I can know, I can commit it in my spreadsheet so that I know that's something that's committed.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. So backing up from, with this conversation, backing up to the proceeding sheet that shows five hundred ninety thousand dollars half of the courthouse payment. The courthouse payment is.
Well, five hundred ninety is a total thing that.
The total, yes, okay. So if there's five hundred ninety thousand and that is the total, it would not need to be this.
You would have to put in the two ninety-six, five hundred, or two ninety-six.
Then, so that two ninety-six would go away?
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
But that's a decision that we're just going to talk about at some other time, and, I mean, I know we're not deciding anything today, but.
Yeah, you all can think about and decide what you want to do.
See where the numbers are at.
Yep.
All right.
Well, I think we discussed that in one week.
Yep, and that's why, like, the previous year, we had taken it all out of. And then, I can remove this one whenever they're going to be done, put the maple in. We've committed the hundred and fifty thousand. So, I still have it next year, so I guess, it's just kind of, I know they're working on it, but like, when will they actually finish? Will it be in June, or will it be in July, or?
It was supposed to be December thirty-first.
Like, a couple of years ago.
Yeah, right.
So, I mean, at least now you see that they're moving, so.
They, the state got involved, it's told them.
Get moving.
It's going to get done, so.
Which is fine, so that's why, if we have any more confirmation before we get done with this, and that's something where we can go on and remove it too, even at a budget hearing, like, hey, they finally, they're done, so we're going to pay it out now, we can remove it from our budget because we're decreasing it versus increasing it, so.
Could be this fiscal year.
If it happens this fiscal year, we can take it out next year, so.
Or.
Yep. And then there's HSA, so this is the other one that, as the time goes on, we're going to try and catch it up to the end of the year and take our money, how do I want to say this? Or are we switching the HSA to come out of this? Because we, remember they wanted us to create our funds to, show better because we have it all like combined in one. Without Lindsay here, I'm probably going to say it wrong. So this is the HSA one, and then we have our side account one.
Or she's all funded?
Yeah, that we, well, I think that's a different number, I think that's seven nine zero zero one.
That's the eighty-five thousand dollar one?
The what?
Eighty-five thousand.
Yeah, that was the eighty-five thousand dollar, the, the traditional one, yeah. So this one, is it different, HSA, that you don't?
I was thinking that there was an HSA on that one too, but no, okay.
Yeah, so I think it's.
There's not, that is just a.
FSA, reinsurance, that's how it's been.
So the fifty thousand dollars is used for what?
That's, I'm going to have to go ask Lindsay how we created it, so. If it went, well, I'm looking back here, so twenty-one, twenty-two, it was just over thirty-four thousand, twenty-two, twenty-three was twenty-nine. If there was something still attached to it, or if we're fully switching to this. We'll have another budget meeting.
All right.
Prior years.
Put a question mark down there.
The next one is capital projects. So in here, I have the river trails, the roads, and the park design, and then the admin. Those are just the amounts from the internal, external loans.
So I asked her this morning, because I, the numbers, the numbers for those, those items did not add up to the two million eight eighty-one, two seventy, and when she said the admin. Excuse me, you do have admin down here.
Yes, she does.
The admin was the twenty, so. Yes.
And if we know something's going to be done here, like if we know, know, we can decrease that amount too, if it'll be done this fiscal year.
Part of the roads might be, maybe, depends how we do that out.
Yep.
Well, well, won't the park, park design, that part of it is, are they're talking about the engineering plan and?
We did say that, yeah.
I, I had the understanding from them last night that that, is it a hundred and thirty thousand? Would be done, would be done within this.
By June thirtieth.
Yeah, before June thirtieth.
I'd say that, correct.
I thought that that's. Let me check the news on river trails.
And then I'll ask Rich and Mike about the roads and river trails, just to see what their expected amounts will be this year.
Rich would tell you possibly this year or next year.
I know.
That's what it will say.
Yeah, and we do have it budgeted all this year, if it were to happen that way, it is in the budget, so. So that has it as a thirteen thousand eighty-two, thirteen million eighty-two thousand, five hundred and ten, with transfers being one million seven hundred ninety-three thousand, six forty-six.
I think we've covered that thirteen thousand, you said, a lot easier.
I know, I can not remember. All right, we'll jump to the revenues. So a lot of these numbers, and I will go kind of quick just because it's basic valuation at the three point five pass-through rate, the three point nine five for rural, and the same levy rate for general supplemental. So, property taxes, two point nine million, utility replacement, thirty-nine thousand, homestead tax credit, eighty-six thousand, elderly tax credit, it's over two thousand, ag land credit, this is all in the basic. Twenty-seven thousand, family farm, ten thousand, two-tier assessment limitation, fifty thousand, commercial industrial replacement, fifty thousand. Mislands revenue, we've always put at five thousand. Sixty-five thousand for the reimbursement. And township clerk funds, I haven't really figured out why they don't have their own revenue, but it comes in the ninety-nine, so they, sixteen townships, they have a ten dollar bond every year, and it's sixteen. The next sheet's forty. Then we get into general supplemental, property taxes, one point eight million, mobile home taxes, two fifty, brain, eleven hundred, utility tax, twenty-five thousand, homestead tax credit, fifty-six thousand. Elderly disabled tax credit, thirteen hundred, ag land credit, eighteen thousand. Family farm credit, sixty-seven hundred, two-tier assessment, thirty-two thousand, commercial industrial, fifteen thousand. And then this is where that, the revenue from the insurance is a hundred and eighty-five, that's the pass-through. Next one's real zero, and I'm finally going to be able to make these inactive, this is all the mental health, Dr. Men had a department in funds. Opioid, I don't know how to, I don't know how to budget for them, so I currently have it as zero, but I don't know when we'll get money and how much money. It sounds terrible, but if you have zero, at least that's not a fund that gets expensed a whole lot. So if some budgets in there, I think we maybe put in substance abuse of like forty thousand or fifty thousand, maybe it was forty-eight thousand, I can't remember exactly. So so far, all we've done is stuff with substance abuse and then the ads that go in the theater, and then the Saints D, and then the housing. Thing that YouTube they're going to do. And then rural basic, property taxes, two point five, grain tax, eighteen hundred, utility tax, forty thousand, homestead tax credit, forty-eight thousand, elderly disabled, five ninety-nine, ag land, thirty thousand, family farm, eleven thousand, two-tier assessment, twelve thousand, and commercial industrial, twenty-two thousand. And then we have the tax increment financing, four point five, that was my previous. And then we have the tax increment financing, 4.5. That was my previous start to figure out why for so much less, but, and so that, if you ever want to look on the Department of Management's website. Um, you scroll halfway down and it's kind of on the right side, um, it will say like budgets, financial reports, valuation. If you click that, you can actually view all the counties' valuation, and then there's I can show you how to use it sometimes. But so on there, what we do is it imports our evaluations, takes it times our current tax levies, and then gives you what the revenue would be. And so then I just add up our, the places we have rebates, so elevator, um, A to Z, absolute. And then add in the Pioneer Prairie, Turtle Creek. They call it Wayne Wind Turbines and then Stacyville Wind Turbines, but I call it Pioneer because that's what they officially labeled it. So it's the two sets and then the Turtle Creek. And so I add those up and that's where we get to 4.5. And then commercial industrial, 5,000. Special assessments, so that's the, um, Valant special assessment. And for that, what we do is we take their total amount of bonds, so they pay on the 2016 A and 2020 A bonds. Take that amount minus their estimated, um, revenues for Valant, and then it comes up to 845106. Which is actually down now a little bit.
Meaning, we paid, meaning original agreement that we, we bought the bonds with the agreement that Valant pays for the bond. That's how it works.
Yep, and so then we have on the backside, because we, we come up with this number, but that levies change every year. So their special assessment number is not accurate, as you'll say, so we make up for it on the following year. So the difference in it usually isn't like very much, but we keep track of it in our office and talk with I don't remember if the gentleman's in Illinois or if he's on in California. I believe it's Kelly is his last name, but he's our financial guy, and so we communicate on that, just so we know where we're at. And then for local option, sales tax, and estimating 175,000. Um, that one's a hard one to guess on right now because sometimes it's 70,000, 80,000 a month, and then sometimes it's like 45, 50,000, kind of all over the place.
So when you have 40, 475,000, is, you know, that's supposed to be split in 70/30, so.
But this is, this is, this is a 70%.
This is a 70% number, okay.
Yep. Interest on investments, we've never really budgeted for it. I think we created this line item for Shannon, but we put in 20,000. And then premiums, a bond sold, 15,000. Um, and then you'll see at the bottom, they transferred from general basic and rural basic to secondary roads. It goes through Rich's fund, but it doesn't get done in his department, so that's why I see them both sides. And then here's my other question about HSA funding. So I believe the goal was to take it from the one fund and put it into the other fund for HSA and to start pulling from that, try and have its own fund to not, I don't, I don't want to say wrong. But to make it easier to budget for. So then we keep, we put in money every year, and then that way, if anyone switches to HSA, that wasn't the previous year. You'd have a little money to, to use. And this one's just printing all the extra funds. You'll see capital projects, there's nothing there but really just current year because of the interaction of them. It even prints the assessors stuff on here, which we end up filling out, but it's really a relative because it's based upon here levy. And then there's our partial self-funding, so that's the line item that the employees, so we pay, what is it, $5 every month, so that's the line item that gets received from that, 10,000.
Five and seven?
Yes, five and seven. So we come to the total of 15,912, 247.
Rachel, what was the 20, next to the 22,170? I didn't understand that.
Um, that's the amended for the current year.
So we.
We originally budgeted the 16, and then with different amendments that have been done, which is it's gonna look big because it's almost done double time, so. With the bonds. So we received the bonds in, and then we also received it in the, what do I want to say? And then the huge frame part. Okay, so we took the money from the like secondary road, general basic, local option, sales tax. And then we put that into capital projects, and then we received it in the external loan also from the bank. Was a good share of that.
So we've been about 400,000 dollars with internal and outside, about 400,000, so that's.
Like 1.4 if I can.
So 16,000.
But so originally we budgeted the, the 16 million, and then with the amendments that we did earlier this year, it went up to 22.
Okay.
Which I do believe there was quite a few revenues maybe actually inside too that I think we added, that, but. Yep, that's the two differences there.
Okay.
Alright, so I would really like to go through the unbalanced worksheets, but like I said, the report's not printing right. For whatever reason. Not showing the current fiscal year's expenditures, and so that shows the carryover next year being 88%. So I have a couple of things I need to check on, and then do you guys, and hopefully get that working. Some of it's the elder bridge, the Naco, those IT charges, to see if those can go back to you.
The phone, if we're gonna switch that around.
Yep, the phone. I can get rid of one 14,000 from the rural basic. Um, and then the HSA.
And then we'll have to.
And then check with Rich and Mike on their projects, and then remove the park design, because we're pretty sure he'll be able to do that.
I was just gonna ask that, so that, we need, we need that in until we know it's done, or do we just take it out?
I mean, if he's very confident that it will be done before, I'm gonna take it out.
Okay.
Uh, because we're spaced, if it's not, then we just have, I don't want to say just have to, but then we can amend next year. But if he's pretty confident, I mean, he's usually pretty accurate, so. I would take it out.
So can I ask a question on the second to the last page?
You in revenues or?
Yeah, I'm in revenue. I'm sorry, I should have.
Yep.
So I'm looking at 217099, and we have one lonely dollar in there. And the last couple of years, we've received, you know, a little over 1,000.
Where are you at?
And we've lined that out.
Where are you at?
Yeah, where are you at?
On what page?
I'm on page 18.
The last one.
Right, and then I drop down and I look in, and we, but you've got those all lined out. Are you not using those accounts anymore?
So.
So those received year-to-date for 24, 25 amounts are, and the big dollar are listed somewhere else.
So you'll see nothing gets budgeted for these lines because it's the assessor's budget, there's a 69,000.
Okay.
So they get certain, they get a little bit of those credits in their budget, but they don't actually I don't know, I don't want to say that they don't budget for them, because they do budget for them, but they're separate, they're a non-budget-for worksheet department.
Right.
It's probably gonna go.
Okay.
Not your government's current.
So I'll have that.
So we enter like current crisis budgets, but they aren't a part of our budget, so.
You enter it because the state needs to know it, but, but it's not something that we are determining for me to count.
It's like when we get certain credits and they'll get a little chip of it here and there, so.
We will, we are part of the assessor's conference board, aren't you aware of that?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, so we will be deciding the assessor's budget.
Okay.
So, so do you want to discuss another budget meeting to go over something? All the stuff that you didn't have today? What days do you have available? Like next week or a couple of weeks? Do you want to do like Tuesday at 10:00 or something? And I should at least be, I don't know if I'll have the worksheet thing figured out yet, because that's solution. But I could at least answer that, should be able to answer that question that you have been.
Is there gonna be an Elizabeth, uh, uh, auditor day?
Yeah.
That's gonna come quicker.
I mean, they will probably, I could be wrong. I'm gonna guess two weeks. I don't really know.
Okay.
So I mean, it's, I don't think we'll have like an hour meeting down here, so I don't think that would be a big deal. They'll have enough stuff to look through.
Okay, so you're looking at next Tuesday, just do a second meeting?
If that works for you guys, or, once you want to go around the one meeting?
I'd rather have, I'd rather have a separate budget meetings, I'd rather have separate myself.
Yeah, I'm gonna agree to that.
I'm good with that. I can make next Tuesday after our meeting work.
Work for you, Pam?
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
10 AM, not 8:30.
And Mark, does that work for you guys?
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion? Yeah, it's good to stay. Tam, do you have any more questions?
Nope, I'm full up for today.
Mark? Todd?
I'm good.
Rachel? I will adjourn the meeting at 12:41.